Reporting.
Call a meeting to order. This is a meeting of the Hampton Board of Selectment and Board of Health, March 8, 2021, 6:00 PM, being conducted remotely in accordance with Governor Baker's March 2020 emergency order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
What time do you have?
6:02.
6:02, okay. Is anyone recording the meeting other than us? Okay, seeing none. I'd like to go forward. Yep, Shelley, come in.
Come on in, Shelley.
Sit right, come right up to the table, honey.
See the corner there? Yeah, there you go.
I thought he said use the cell.
A little more, a little more.
Not catching Mary Ellen.
Maybe I'm in the way.
No, you're not in the way at all.
No.
No.
Now we lost that.
Now we got everybody.
Okay, there we go.
There we go.
All right, the first item on our agenda this evening is a dangerous dog hearing being held under chapter 140, section 157. I'd ask to see if the following people are here. Teresa Majewski? I want to unmute her. Teresa? Larian Nelson? Look at Teresa.
I've asked Teresa to unmute.
Okay.
Maybe go to gallery or maybe you'll see everybody.
All right, let's see. I see Teresa on here, but.
We see an L though.
We don't want.
You know, there's a L.
Third one down and break the floor. One, two, fourth line, third one over.
Yeah.
That could be her. Yeah, pictures, we know.
All right, let me, I have.
That could be her. Could be Larry, too.
There's Teresa.
I've requested them all.
Do you see Teresa?
Unmute.
Or no?
Oh.
Miss her, yeah.
She's on?
Well, there's a Teresa on the screen.
There's a Teresa, but she's not unmuted. Teresa Majewski? Please unmute.
I can't be able to speak.
Where'd she go?
She's on the top center there, so.
Pretty big turnout tonight.
I think we heard Shelley was gonna be here.
Must be up.
Who's that L?
That's what I'm wondering, you know.
I've asked, I've asked L to unmute.
Okay, I'm just calling.
Twice.
Teresa and Laura. L is.
Yeah.
We're guessing.
I just.
Would the, would the person who signify as by the letter L unmute? Is that, is that Larian Nelson? All right.
Teresa is unmuted.
Okay, Teresa, is that Teresa Majewski? Hello, Teresa?
Just make sure the speaking works. Hey, Dad, can you say something just to make sure we hear you?
Yeah, how's that, John?
Unfortunately, that's all we need. That's all we need, thank you. Okay, that part works.
Teresa's saying.
How much you wait for it, or just, you know, they don't show, they don't show.
But I don't even know if that's Teresa because she hasn't responded.
And she's unmuted.
And she's unmuted.
Where was that, lower left corner of the screen?
No, second, top row, second one over. Laura says she's trying to get on.
Okay, Laura says she's trying to get on.
Upper right.
Does she have the code? Do we have the code?
Yes, I talked to both of them this afternoon. And although they were terrifically comfortable, they seem to know how to get on.
While you're waiting, do you want to just ask Shelley, we have her budget in front of us, which seems to be pretty much pretty ordinary. Any issues coming here? Right, there you go.
Okay. You're not, so you have unmuted yourself? Okay, you.
Took you hours, huh?
Okay, well, unmute. Unmute yourself? Oh, oh.
Which one is that?
That L was not Laura.
I guess not.
No. Pam says she's trying to get on.
And, and Bob has unmuted you from this side.
Who is it?
Teresa.
Yeah.
So we see you on the screen.
It says, she's muted, it says muted still.
You are still muted.
I asked her to unmute.
So in the upper right corner of your screen.
Maybe.
You should see the option to unmute. Okay, okay, lower left, that's where I see it on my screen, too. Okay, so hit. Yeah, yeah.
Maybe that's not her.
Yeah, I can check that.
Yeah, but is it Teresa?
No, she says she's.
I will, can you hear her now on the screen? No?
No. It still says muted.
It says.
Okay, now she's unmuted.
Can you hear her?
Now I can hear you.
Yep, they got it. Okay. You're all set then? Okay.
Thank you. Now, now we just.
Now we need Laura.
Now we need Laura, Laura.
He said it's my service, it will stop jumping in two minutes.
Okay, I'm back.
Okay.
Who's in that?
Teresa.
I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, yes, we can hear you.
Okay.
Teresa.
Able to get on? Yep.
It's gonna make for exciting viewing.
Okay. Well, yeah, if you're traveling, it's gonna be hard to keep the signal.
L is not Laura.
Okay.
Oh, gotcha. Okay. Find a spot with a signal and. Yep, okay, thank you. All right, bye-bye. I can see forces after Pat calls. And jump on.
Okay.
Maybe we want to something. How do we arrange this? We can list of the minutes. Or no?
Okay, well, we'll, we'll, we'll recess the hearing until one of the, one of our principals has a access to a signal. And can we do the minutes? Can we do the minutes? April 27, minutes of April 27, 2020. Move to approve. All in favor? All right. All right, May 18, 2020.
After the fact, can people access Zoom and get the actual meeting?
Yes.
At any time, they could do that. So maybe on the minutes we could put, if you'd like, if you'd like to see the, the minute in its entire, the meeting in its entirety, check Zoom.
They're right next to each other.
Yeah, but I mean, if they wanted to go back to May 18, 2020 is what I'm saying, not this one right now. And if you could do that, I assume.
Well, I mean, if they're looking at the minutes online.
If they look at the minutes online, it says recording, May 18, 2020, and they'll say minutes. All in favor? All right. Okay. So then we have January 4, 2021.
I have one more issue, but no big deal. So I'll make a motion to accept.
No, I got it.
Did you have something?
Yeah. Suckers reports. I brought forth the request to appoint Tina Duran, but there's no mention of the vote, which we took.
Okay, so there's gotta be a.
Do we, I think we did it at another meeting.
We, we took the vote. I brought up the request, hey, we want to appoint Tina Duran to the C.A. away board, and we took a vote at that time. We brought forth the request. It doesn't say the board took a vote to a pointer.
But I think the vote was in the second meeting.
That's what I think, too.
The eleven.
Yeah, you, you said, you said they're gonna bring forward the name of Tina Duran, blah, 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 and then the next, the next meeting we.
Yeah, for some reason, I don't think we have a back, we have a petition or something.
No, we wanted the date of the right, the term.
Yeah, the term, we wanted something. Okay, so.
You had a memo thing you said, or something?
Pardon me?
You had something.
I just had a word, a word about, it's supposed to be what, but that's okay. I'll just give it to her. It's not, it's just clerical. Second.
All in favor? Thank God. January 19, 2021.
They will see Representative Bashar moving, right?
What?
Someday we'll see Brian.
Yeah, maybe someday. Okay.
Good overview.
All in favor? January 25, 2021.
I made all the mo, I think it's Mary Ellen's turn to move this one, because I mean, I feel.
All in favor?
Sharing here.
All right. All right, I'm gonna reopen the hearing, and then when she comes on, oh, there she is, okay, she's here.
There she is.
She's here.
Just in time. Okay, Teresa, can you hear us?
I can hear you, can you hear me?
Yes, Laurie, Laura?
Yes.
Okay.
I can hear you.
Okay, so this is, this is a dangerous dog hearing in accordance with chapter 140, section 147. The, the three people I, we have witnesses are Ms. Ms. Majewski, Laura Ann Nelson, and Shelley Sears. And I would ask you, according to the law, we have to swear you in, so I please ask you to stand and raise your right hand. Raise your right hand, sit here. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you are about to give at this hearing shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, under pains, penalty, or perjury?
I do.
Teresa?
Yes.
Okay.
I do.
All right, we'll begin with, we'll begin with Teresa's complaint. What I would do is I would go through, I would, I would have Teresa give her complaint, Shelley, I'll call on Shelley after that, and then I'll call on Laura to respond in some way, and then the board can ask questions, and we'll move from there. So Teresa, you wanna read your complaint?
Sure. Do you want me to go through just the day of the actual attack, or the incidents is leading up to it as well?
The entire thing, please.
Okay. My first encounter with Tiger would have been somewhere between April and May of last year. My dog Rudy was tied up on his leash outside. He's got about a 15-foot radius that he doesn't have a big area, it's not like a run, it's, he's actually tied up. I happened to be doing yard work in the area, and I was right in his same vicinity, and Tiger came across the stone wall, I could see her coming across the stone wall as she's running towards us. At that point, I was holding something, I was holding either a shovel or a rake or something, but, I don't know, I scared her away. I, I shoot her past across the stone wall. You can still hear me, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, um, and I put Rudy in, and that was the end of that situation. Few weeks went by. I was in my garage, this was probably, it was at nighttime, it was probably between 8:30, 9 o'clock at night, I was in my garage. I have a detached garage, it's about 30 feet from my house. And I was alone, I was not with Rudy, but I went to leave the garage, whether I was putting something in the trash, I don't know, I turned around and Tiger was standing there at the entrance to the garage. Same thing again, she was not aggressive with me, but it made me uneasy, I would, I had, you know, stuff there, either a rake or something, and I, I shoot her away again. And I kind of backed my way into the house at that point. The next time was, this would have been, this would have been a few weeks after that, and it would have been early June. And it was the same type situation as the first incident where Rudy was tied up, my dog Rudy was tied up on his le, on his lead, and again, I was right in the area and I was doing something for yard work, so I, again, I had something in my hand, whether it be at a rake or a shovel or whatever, and same thing, I saw her coming. And I, again, shoot her away, and she didn't completely retreat. She, she got enough, she got far enough away where I could grab Rudy, put him in the house, and I have like a screened porch. And I put his, he and I, I put him in there, and I was in there, too, and I immediately turned around, and she did not go home, I didn't realize she had followed me to the house. And she was standing at the screen door, and she started attacking my door. I, I could not believe how vicious she was. All teeth, and like I said, at that point, I got, I went into the other door, into the actual, you know, behind an actual door, door, hardwood door. And I could see Laura was coming, Laura was actually coming at that point, she was coming across the stone wall, and she was calling Tiger. Tiger was not coming to Laura. She started running around my house, and I don't know, it, it looked like she was, she just wanted to get in the house. She did rip the screen door, she did not come through it, the screen was ripped. Can you still hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, anyway, Laura, it took Laura about five minutes to get her under control at that point. When she did get her under control, I went out onto the deck and I said to Laura, I said, Laura, I told her about the two previous times. I said, Laura, I'm petrified of that. I did not talk to Laura before, before this, not about the dog. I said, Laura, I'm petrified of the dog, I don't want her in my yard again. I said, she's, I, she's gonna either kill my dog or kill me, I'm, I'm I'm terrified of her. Anyway, um, she said she apologized and everything, she said it wouldn't happen again. And honestly, for six months, it did not, nothing happened for six months, I did not see the dog over here, and then on New Year's Day, I put Rudy out on his leash, and he wasn't gonna do it, I, I stood there, I stood there for about two minutes, but he wasn't done his business, so I, I went downstairs, I was, all I was gonna do is put a load of laundry in between the washing machine, I was gonna put a load of laundry in the dryer, okay? I wasn't down in the basement more than 10 sec, I hadn't left him more than 10 seconds. And I could hear a terror, I could hear him yelping and crying and screaming, and I went upstairs, and after the last incident in June, I have kept a pitchfork by the back door. I grabbed the, when I came upstairs, Tiger was straddled over Rudy, she had him pinned to the ground, and she had his neck in her mouth, and she was pulling at his neck. I had, I took the pitchfork and I just started stabbing her with it. Um, like I said, I just started, and she finally, she did, she got off of him, I grabbed him, I was able to grab him, I was able to get him in the house, and again, I turned around, she was at the back door. I was livid at that point, I didn't want her going through the screen door, I opened the door and I just started stabbing again. At that point, Laura, Laura had heard the commotion, she was coming over at that point, she came over the stone wall, and I just, I said, she's gonna kill him, she's gonna kill him. Um, again, I, there was no blood that I noticed at that time, it was New Year's Day, like I said, it was about 1 o'clock on New Year's Day, I did not take him to the vet because I didn't see any blood or anything like that. You know, I watched him for any signs and like I said, there was no immediate, there was no blood, there was no life, what I thought were life-threatening emergencies, so, um, he ate that night and everything, about two days late, two to three days later, he did have an abscess that had to be treated, he had an abscess, I had to take him to the vet, he had to be put on fluids and everything, and when she shaved his neck, you could see all the teeth marks in his neck. And that's pretty much where it stands.
Okay, thank you. Did the board have any questions of Teresa? Shelley?
Okay, so I only found out about it, I think after she went to the vet, Teresa.
Can everyone hear Shelley?
Yes, I can hear her fine, yes.
So then I, I talked to her, I talked to Teresa, and then I immediately sent an email to you guys asking about the hearing, because, you know, Rudy weighs like 24 pounds and Tiger weighs about 100. So.
And you, did you observe any, any of the wounds, or?
Yes, I took pictures.
Okay.
It cost Teresa over $300 after that.
All right, anything else? Any questions of, Laura?
Yes. My turn?
Yes.
Okay, what I can say is, um, that obviously this was an issue that I handled correctly. From this point forward, the, the changes I've made is that I'm having a, an electric in-ground fence system installed as soon as the ground is thawed, that'll be being put in. On the, I had a, a run installed now that is for a dog up to 150 pounds, so I, I do have a solid run that will hold Tiger. During this incident in which Tiger showed such aggression was during a time that she was under treatment with medicine called pregnozone. And it was for allergies, but since then, Dr. Peck has taken her off of that, and we have her on a different medicine to treat her skin, and we've seen a tremendous difference in her disposition. And that I will never have her be put on that medication again. And that the issue as far as Tiger getting loose prior to this was, we had a doggy door that had no way, you know, closing it, it was an in-and-out, prayed off my porch. And every time Tiger got loose, it was of which a family member opened that porch, like the last time was to get wood pellets, to bring in a half a load of wood pellets into the house from the porch, which they just let Tiger run back and forth, and she'd go out that door and get loose. We have had that door removed and put in a solid wall. And I would say that I'd like the opportunity to pending if Teresa is okay with it, move forward from this point with Tiger under these restraints, and with the pandemic, as soon as I receive my vaccine, I'm going to go into dog training with Tiger. I'm not inexperienced with dogs or animals in general, I'm embarrassed by this, and I do not ever want this to happen again. Tiger was a rescue out of a pound in which she had a history, an unknown history, but it was obvious she was starved and neglected. She was a lot more than I should have taken on at the time when I adopted her, I was ill, I was still dealing with chemo treatments, and I'm, I'm just, I'm very sorry, I, I should have had the training put into her prior to when I, I've been able to, so, that's basically, that's what I have to say. And again, I apologize, and I will be proactive from, or am being and will be, continue to be proactive with this dog.
Is, is Tiger spayed or neutered?
She's spayed, she wasn't spayed till I adopted her, I, she was spayed afterwards.
All right, Teresa, do you want to add anything?
Yes, I'd like to say that I don't want to see the dog put down either. She can never, ever come over to this property, and, you know, I'm, it, it's just, it's an unfortunate situation, but I don't want, with, and especially with everything that's been happening, I mean, I'm terrified of it, she's a very intimidating dog, she's, she's huge, she's very intimidating, and as long as Laura promises that it never happens again, I'm fine with it, but I don't always have, I mean, I walk between my house and my barn, and I can't always carry a pitchfork with me, or, like I said, I, I just can't. I'm worried about me now because I think she associates me with the person who, you know, fought her off, which I did. So I'm fine with that, I, I don't wanna, I'm, I'm an animal lover. They had another dog over there, Laura's brother had a dog, and he, he was a pit, but he was the nicest dog, so I'm not a kind of neighbor that, I love dogs, I've been a dog owner for a long time. A nice dog, you can come over anytime, but no, I mean, I, I can't, I'm, I'm petrified of the dog, I'm petrified of the dog. That's all I have to say, but no, I don't, I'm I, I don't want to see any kind of enforcement where she has to be put down, but I want, I want an absolute promise that she is never over here again, ever.
Shelley, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, I don't want to be put down either, I don't want any animal to be, but electric fence may not put your dog in. I think that she should be deemed a dangerous dog, that's what I think, and that she should have to do number two below C and number seven.
And those are, number, number two would be. Oh, and those are, uh, number, number two would be, the, the board, if, if the board deems the dog a dangerous dog, then it must order at least one of seven, uh, seven steps. And one of them is that the dog be humanely restrained. The other is that the dog be confined to the premises of the keeper of the dog. And there's, there's rules that have to be followed. That when the dog is removed from the premises, the dog shall be securely and humanely muzzled and restrained. The owner or the keeper of the dog provide proof or insurance. Uh, the owner or the keeper of the dog provide licensing authority with information which may identify the dog. And, uh, one of them is that the dog be altered, which we know is, is, uh, reproductivey altered. So we know that. So we have, if we deem the dog dangerous, then we have, uh, we can order one of six different things. Must order. We must order one of six different things. So the question is, we, we have three choices. We can dismiss this. We can, uh, we can, uh, deem the dog a nuisance, a dog, or we can deem the dog a, a dangerous dog.
I gave you the definitions of nuisance.
Yeah.
I have it here, right? Yeah. We have it here. I have a question for Shelley. The three categories, are they permanent? That is, uh, Mrs. Nelson feels that, you know, she's going through training, perhaps there was a medication thing. If we said this was a dangerous dog, is she allowed to come back in a year or so? Look, we've taken steps, we feel. Can you reevaluate and re-categorize this? Is that allowed?
I would say no. I can find out, but I would say no.
You know, I just wonder because, you know, she's making a point about medication and stuff like that. I would say personally, I agree with you about the, the electric fence. I really don't see that as being something, that's fine for keeping your animal in the yard, showing the company. When an animal of that size wants to go through,
Right.
They're going through, you know? And that's just a, it's a nice boundary thing and stay in the yard, but it's not a, this is not like a run. I would see that as being a, a good solution.
Well, I'm sorry, the electric fence you're saying isn't a good solution, you don't think?
I don't think it's a good permanent solution. I think it might be if the dog had a better training. And that's why I was asking, if in the future, you completed training, you had an evaluation by professional, they said, okay, we think the dog is a different kind of dog and not prone to any kind. Perhaps that's something in the future. With the way the dog has evidenced itself now, I don't see as that being a good solution with its actions in the past year.
I, I, I'm sorry, I dropped the phone. I, I do agree with, um, just in the past, working at the animal hospital, that an in-ground fence is not, um, a solution for a dog, um, like mine, if I, you know, um, because they can run through it. Uh, that's why I have the, um, the tie. And we also already, but it wasn't up before, but we have above-ground electric. It was installed because, um, we're having a problem with coyotes currently. You guys probably already know this on the mountain. Um, and I have pigs on the property. Um, so I have, I have a very high-powered, um, solar electric fence on the top that Tiger did hit once and she just froze in it getting shocked. I had to shut it off to get her out of it. But that's one thing, I know she'll never hit the top fence. Um, I don't know if you're familiar with electric fencing.
Well, well, I think that Laura should be commended for having done the different steps that she's done and for trying to address this in a, in an amiable way. Um, I do however think that Shelley has a very good point that, um, this has got to be a permanent solution and that the dog, I would agree with you, is, is dangerous as it presently stands. And so, um, I would be interested in whether that label can be taken off in the future, but for now, he's certainly a dangerous dog. And, um, whether you have to do all of these or you can do some of these. Um, and if you have, if you could do some of these, which ones would you recommend?
I would do the kennel outside and have the top and a bottom. And then I would do the, if she, if it had, if the dog had to leave the property, be muzzled. So I would do, um, two and three.
Which is, which is consistent with actions that Shelley has brought before the board in the past as well. And, you know, that, I think is a good thing to be consistent with how we treated with neighbor issues with dogs. You know, we don't.
Right. Well, people's safety is, and animal safety is very important. So, um, you know, you, you don't want to be looking at it in hindsight and say, oh, well, the dog got through. You know, I mean, that's not going to be acceptable. Um, so I, Laura, is, those are two, are those two things you can do?
Um, I, I heard the, um, you said the, uh, a kennel with, I do have actually a kennel that I purchased for her this summer, um, with a top. Um, I bought it from Tractor Supply, Shelley. It's the, well, I forgot the name of it now, but I already have that erect. I would have to put a floor in it. Um, and, uh, the other thing I thought I heard was a muzzle when she was off property.
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I do have a muzzle for, um, or a muzzle here. It's for my old dog, um, for the vet, but I can, does that mean, um, if I were to bring her out on a hike or a walk, she needs to wear the muzzle?
Yeah.
Okay. I would, I would want to get a different kind of muzzle so she can pant in it. I have a full closed mouth muzzle, but yeah, whatever, um, solution can be found that makes Teresa comfortable and gives me a chance to get this dog, um, proven to be a safer dog.
And Teresa, are you comfortable with that?
I'm very comfortable with that. Yep.
Am I still unmuted?
Yes.
You're still on mute, yes.
Okay. Um, I do want to say that in June, when I told Laura, I had not seen the dog for six months. Like I said, I think this was an unfortunate, she had restrained the dog successfully for six months. Um, and like I said, I think this is, I, I just want to reinforce the fact that she is a very, very dangerous dog. And please, never, ever do I want to go through this again with myself or my dog or even the wildlife that's around here. I don't, you know, I've got a lot of deer here too. I don't want them attacked. I don't, I, I don't want to see this happen to anything.
Or do we?
Laura, does the dog have a microchip?
Yes, she does.
Will, will you get a copy of this to, to, yeah, to Laura?
We have to, we have to do an official order.
Okay. All right.
So would you have a, a motion to deem the dog a dangerous dog in ordering the following uh, limitations?
Shelley, I can make a motion to, uh, classify the dog as a dangerous dog per the recommendation of the, uh, dog officer and based on the evidence presented in force and ask that C2 and C3 be followed for remediation of the dog. These actions should be completed by, what's a reasonable date, Shelley?
Well, she's already got the kennel. Well.
Right. She's going to put a floor in it. I mean, we don't want to be, right now, she's restrained on property, not going to go off property. So we can be by the end of March.
Sure.
By the end of March.
All in favor? I just point out that, uh, you have 10 days to appeal this if you'd like to, uh, to the district court. And we have to file it with the town clerk as well, our decision. And we'll send you, both of you, a formal order, uh, within the next few days. We'll have it typed up and sent to you. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that your first one?
I'm a cat person.
You don't have a problem with cats for God's sake.
Just lock them in the closet. All right. Um, animal inspector budget while you're here. Once again.
You know, this is just going to like.
It's just going to put us right over the edge.
Seriously, we're going to have to start the bake sale again. You know, boy.
How's, how's the car working out?
Yeah, good.
Yeah.
I didn't know she had Sirius radio added to your budget. Please, I'm kidding.
John recommended Sirius radio for the.
Yeah, fine, right?
That looks good. It's no change.
Great.
Good.
You do a good job at a minimal budget, I have to tell you. Seriously.
You get a good value.
Appreciate your phone call today.
Oh.
Helping me out with this. Thank you.
No problem.
All right. Knock out historical budget while we're right there, because that is just incredible.
Start one of the historic.
Budget mood here.
Okay. How much do they want?
400.
400.
Which I have to tell you, I'm not sure we actually expend it, but it has to do with if you need to file with, uh, you know, get a membership and stuff like that.
All right. I would just scratch that off the list. Uh, the next big item, we might as well go to the next big item on our agenda, which is the appointment of a chief of police. All right. Uh, we did this here. If the budgets are done, the minutes are done. All right. Chief of Police discussion. Anyone want to begin?
Throw it out there. Um, seniority. We had, uh, three interesting, different and qualified candidates in front of us. Uh, I appreciate them, their attendance. I appreciate their spending time with those and answering our questions, questions that, you know, I recently, thank you, Mary Ellen, Don and Bob for, you know, developing them and good essays that they gave us. You know, this is only my second year. I know you guys think I've been here since, you know, the 1800s, but this is only the second time, uh, I've had a chief because Chief Farnsworth did a great job serving the town. And again, like to thank him for his time. It's a difficult thing. Uh, I can recall, Don, you've probably been here one, five or six chiefs in your time here, starting with, uh, you know, maybe Chief Joy, Chief Stone, et cetera. Sure.
Joy.
And we went through Adams and Melus and all that. Yeah. So, bottom line, three good, qualified people and three different people. They are three different. I think that came through both in the questions. You know, maybe it's a, a sign of where they came from, a sign of their roles in the police department. Um, I think we have a, a challenge in front of us. I do think, my sense of the board though, I think we're all going to come down, honestly, with, with the same candidate, just as an idea of keeping the department moving forward. So, the key thing that spoke to me was rapport with the staff and where they wanted to go with dispatch, because that's the decision they're going to have to implement. And that really spoke to me where, where they went with that. So those are my thoughts. Mary Ellen?
Well, um, I thought that the, um, I took, I took notes on, on the, on the interviews and I thought that they were different. They were, had different depth. Um, there was differences in, um, their responsiveness to the question. There was differences in, um, what their focus was, I thought. Um, so, uh, Officer Trombley spent, um, a great deal of time talking about community policing and talking about, um, um, getting out of the car and making friends with the seniors and about, um, police reform a bit. Sergeant Ivan spoke about delegating to the sergeants and giving them more authority. Um, I, having higher standards for everybody. Um, uh, and then Sergeant Seega said he liked to be an active listener, um, that he wasn't as verbally comfortable as he was listening and trying to size up the situation, uh, but that he thought training was important. So they all made good points. Okay. Um, I, I also use the point system, which I always use, um, to try to assess the different candidates and came out with one being significantly above the other two. Um, but I think that, um, I can share that or don't have to share that, whatever. But I was, I'm particularly concerned about the education that they have. I was particularly concerned about the experiences that they've had. I was concerned about how I thought their leadership style would go. Um, I was concerned about their essay. I thought the essays were, um, uh, some were more focused and some were more rambly. Um, and some were, we're not getting, we're not getting an English teacher. So, so they didn't have to be, you know, written in the style that, uh, might be submitted for an essay. But, um, and then I, then I looked at their, at their interview. And I, I think we want to pick somebody. Um, you and Don had both said that you were, you're, you're concerned when, um, one of them asked us what we were looking for and you both mentioned dispatch. And I'm really most concerned about it being community policing and making a connection with the public so that we don't turn into one of those towns, one of those cities that you see on the news all the time where they hate their police and they're fighting with their police and they don't respect their police and all that kind of stuff. I, I think we're miles away from that now. Um, but I don't want to see that happen to, to us. And I think we want somebody that can develop those, that kind of rapport. Do you want to, you want to go on, Don?
Yeah. I, I thought the interviews were all, uh, good. Uh, I tried, so I tried to evaluate, I evaluated different criteria. I kind of used your evaluation thing. Uh, then the, the length and breadth of the depth of experience. And of course, all of them have been 20 or more years as a police officer and particularly in towns where they know the town. I looked at the education. I thought one had a little bit more, better, more better.
You could write a sentence.
Could write a sentence, unlike, speak a sentence unlike me. Uh, had, had a better, uh, you know, criminal justice background in education, but one of them also was working very hard to get that degree. So I thought that was important. Uh, the leadership style, I detected different leadership style from, from each of them. Uh, the interview, I thought one was, uh, pretty, uh, better than the others in, in the, in the interview. In the essays, I thought another one was different, better than the one who I thought was, was good in the interview. So then I read all the recommendations. Uh, I talked to people in town about the difference, who they thought it might be. Uh, I was leaning towards one person and, uh, I'm still leaning towards that person. So, uh, and that person, in my opinion, is Sergeant Trombley, Detective Trombley.
Well, that's the person that came out tops in my list also. Um, I think that he, um, had prepared for the interview well.
Yeah.
So he knew, I mean, you, you, you can prepare for an interview if you're going for police chief. You know, they're going to ask you about the latest law or the whatever. And I thought he had prepared well. I thought he was articulate in expressing himself. Um, and I do know that the, the feedback that I get from the public, everybody that has an interaction with him is favorably impressed. Um, he doesn't, um, he takes the time to get to their issue and to try to resolve it in a amicable way if possible. Um, and to, um, uh, leave the interaction with them respecting the police and, and, um, and him personally. So I would, um, if we want to go forward, do you want me to make a motion?
Sure. I was going to speak.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sorry.
So, brings up a good point. If you recall, that was, community policing was the question I had for each of the candidates when they were here. Obviously, that's important. That there was, to me, a notable thing. The one difference that did speak out is that Detective Trombley didn't have any leadership background in the, in the police department. Being a detective, he wasn't like a sergeant like the other two. But to be honest, that was the, the only, I won't say negative. It was the one thing where the others really scored higher.
Yes.
Because they didn't have that.
Particularly the, one of them was marine sergeant, so that kind of leadership.
There. Probably I've had more interaction with them, you know, over the years as they've come in, presented, you know, with budgets and stuff like that and, and brought up the date when, in the absence of Chief Farnsworth, one of them would come in and work with the union and stuff like that. So I've had, gosh, 15 years of interaction with them on, on different matters involving the town. One point I will make is 15 years ago, I was one of the board that did recommend Detective Trombley to be the chief of police. And we voted that, at that case. Uh, for different reasons, Scott decided to not accept that and retain his current role. And I respect him for that. I think it's a, an opportunity for us to give him that second chance at it. So I would, I guess I would, as I said earlier, I think we're all on the same page. I think we were blessed to have three good candidates for the chief police internal. If that speaks to anything, it speaks to Chief Farnsworth for doing good training. They have a good staff and basically empowering them to have the opportunity and the background to step up and ask to be chief of police. I don't think honestly, we would have been hurt with any of the three. I just think, as you say, go through a grading system. You're going to see one that grades out higher. And I think the board would be well served to offer the position to Detective Trombley as well.
Okay. So I'll make a motion that we appoint. Okay, so I'll make a motion that we appoint Scott Trombley, that we enter into negotiations, is that what we do?
We offer, we offer the position, yeah.
All positions, Scott, Detective Trombley and authorize the town administrator to begin negotiations for contract.
I make that motion.
I'll second that, I guess.
Do we negotiate?
We negotiate.
I think we negotiate. So make a motion.
Which will be in executive session.
So I make a motion that we appoint Detective Trombley to be a police chief and that we enter into negotiations for a contract settlement in the executive session, in our next meeting perhaps.
Let me go through a couple. One thing here. Is there a, would you, is there a start point, because right now we have, you know, Chief Marche as the interim chief. We haven't completed a contract, so I'm saying we start entering negotiation, it's our intent to offer him the position. We'll enter into negotiations and when we're done with that contract, he therefore is the chief of police. Because right now, we can't really have two guys.
And I would say, like, if we had an April first deadline for, if we could do that for negotiations, that's a nice smooth deadline and that's about when
We told Mark.
He was going to be on to approximately that time.
Effectively, Chief Marche is still the man.
Okay.
Okay, so let's see if we can get the motion down to twenty-five, twenty-five words or less.
I move that we offer Scott Trombley the position of chief of police, subject to a contract being signed.
That sounds good, I'll second that.
All in favor?
It was like fifteen words.
Okay, congratulations, Scott, if you're watching and you're not, congratulations anyways.
All right. Review a transfer station expenses and issues at the transfer station.
Yeah, I threw that out there just because, you know, we had a, you know, pretty involved and good detailed discussion with the public on that, and I thought it's worthwhile recapping, we're six months or so into it, it hasn't worked out for us. You know, with the new provider, et cetera, and could we have any feedback, could we, could we ask, so if they could, department for feedback on that.
Jane, are you on?
Well, it doesn't have to be like us, for the moment.
Jane, Jane did put together both the budget as well as the expenses and projected to the end of the year and came up with, it looks like we are exactly on budget and the predictions, the projections in the budget process last year were right on target.
No PowerPoint, nothing?
And there's no other issues up there? I saw two bobcats up there Saturday.
What'd you say?
I said, oh God, I'll never go up there now.
They're just crossing the road, that's all.
Oh, God. No, I'm very surprised and happily that there aren't issues, I, I text Julia, I ask her to empty whatever we need emptied at the time, they're ninety percent of the time, ninety-five percent of the time, they're prompt, they come and get the stuff, they dump it, I, I really haven't had an issue, which I'm really happy with. They did take something prematurely a few weeks ago, but they did not charge us for it, so I was thrilled with that. So there, it seems to be working out well.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, just wanted to bring it up to date. Guidelines for emails, meetings, minutes, and materials.
This is, this is part of the goal thing, and if we, the first thing I would, before we get to that, I would ask if the fire station ventilation, electricity has been put in? Do we know that?
I saw the chief today, I don't think it has, but.
We see Pat online, maybe Pat knows. Pat Farrel.
Pat Farrel, are you there?
No, actually, we've got the, right there.
Oh, we've got them.
Hello, how are you? Yeah, I'm still, I'm still work in progress. The chief could speak to it more as the master electrician, but he, he'll be presenting an electrical issue that was found, so it's still a work in progress at this time.
And, and do we have any anticipation of when it will be complete?
I would say within a month barring the, the problem could be resolved, it should be a simple, a simple fix, but again, it's more of an electrical, he would have to explain in detail the power and power out situation.
Okay, thank you. And then the other thing for the first was the guidelines and whatever, and I gave you a thing which you don't have to use, and you, you might want to even say, I don't, we don't want to do this, but I have always been, in the groups that I've been involved in, a big advocate of periodically assessing how you're doing, saying what you could do better, you know, just trying to tweak what you do so that every day you get a little better than you were the day before. And so I gave you that form last week, we don't have to use that form, we don't have to even use this as a, as a goal or as an action step, but I just think it's healthy to periodically do that. So if you think, so your feedback, you think it's a good idea, not a good idea, you want to chalk it all up? I gave you, I gave you a sheet last week that says develop and abide by, I already did mine, I already filled mine in, but they had questions on it.
I think so, but we were, I think we were focused on the chief of police, we could put that off.
Okay, but whether we want to do this or not, this had like, what are the three best things about the board's meetings, what are the three things the board should be trying to improve? Briefly describe a policy for use of the, of email, what are the main, three main things we should consider immediately to enhance our performance? And then consider, this is just a consideration, that was a consider other thing, so do we want to do this or we don't want to do this, gentlemen?
Well, I don't know, let's look it over.
All right, so I gave you one, but I'll, I'll email you a second, okay, because I don't have any points. And that'll take care of that.
I have a comment on the other portions of this. Certainly, meeting minutes should be up to date, actually, I think we are up to date.
Pretty close.
So, I mean, there's been a lot of catching up, but with the addition tonight, I think we are, we're almost there. Yeah, and so, once, once up to date, I think it's important to stay up to date and have them posted. With regard to the agenda, we have a pattern of trying to put together the agenda on Wednesday morning and in hopes of getting it to the chair sometime around noon. And he will either send back recommendations or give approval, sometimes other members of the board will submit something. And on Thursday, we try to get the packet together and get it posted. For the town administrator report, I am struggling to get that to you on Friday. If you take a look at what I have given you tonight, half of those items came in today. And what will happen is, after the meeting tonight, tomorrow and Wednesday, questions that arise, other things that happen through email caused me to send out messages to the boards committees, department heads and so forth, saying, can you give me this answer? Oftentimes, I don't get that answer until, you know, sometimes Mondays. And so a lot, there's a flood of information on Monday, and that's the dilemma. And today is, today is a very good example of what, what has come in, so. I mean, I think I can send you something certainly on Friday with realization that come Monday and, and the meeting on Monday is going to be significant additions to it.
When I went through this questionnaire, which we're going to do in a later time, one of the things I put at the end was consider changing to biweekly meetings. Because I thought the turnaround time between us meeting on Monday and you having to get that stuff out to us by Thursday. And then the Thursday to Monday laps when other things develop. I thought every other week meeting would be more productive and would get us out of, I mean, the transition between the board when it used to have to run the whole show and now the board that has a town administrator that can do a lot of that running of the whole show. So, the, the way it presently is, we have three working days between meetings. And the way it would change, we would have seven working days between meetings, and I think that that seven days would make meetings run more smoothly and be more up to date, and I don't know.
That's a decision for the board, but I can tell you that the squeeze that I feel, and I think any administrator will feel, is that there's always a trade-off between doing meeting agendas and assembling a packet and doing the other things that surround board select and meetings, and also doing the work that reflects the goals that we've, we've laid out there, you know, getting work, getting other work done, other than meeting related work. So, that's always the trade-off.
The one problem with that, and I think I brought it up before, is that the difference between the manager and administrator. The biweekly thing, I think, works great if you have a town manager, because they're empowered basically to run it in the select board or council at that point, it's basically just the board directors that comes in, sets goals, reviews what's in operation. But the town manager, he or she is really running the show. The administrator works for the board. And if you let go two weeks, the board then has no input in what's going on. The other limitation that unfortunate Bob has faced with, that when the emergency goes away, he's going to be restricted in his hours, and we talked about the fact that Thursday, Friday may not be on the table for him unless he's donating that time, basically, and that's going to be a problem. But because of what we are, the board selectman and a town administrator, the town administrator gets the marching orders from this board.
But I think you can get those smart, same marching orders, but have more time to complete them rather than, but not act independently, I mean, you know, and I think.
Then we're not responsive, you know, it might be, it might be that you, the, the so to speak, the, the way to accommodate that is to say, well, we are going to meet every week. But on occasion, the chair might say, well, we're waiting for so many answers, we're not going to have a meeting this Monday. But we're scheduled for Monday.
Well, it just, it just seems to me.
Tuesday meetings, which we used that back when I started with Jim and Dwayne, we met on Tuesday so that Monday was a good day to read it, recap everything, get it all together. And that's, there's nothing wrong with that either, the reason we got away from it was that the paper came to us and said, we can't make it into a publication. The weekly one, they couldn't make it into their publication in time, and we wouldn't.
They're always two weeks behind, actually, they need to be two weeks behind on the news.
But nowadays, so, so I mean, that's an option too, is to say, fine, we'll change our meeting to Tuesdays, which gives a full day for Bob, so to speak, to get it all together. And places you've been, have meeting days all within a Monday or kind of like it's based on?
A lot have meetings on Tuesdays. And then it also relates to what kind of press is covering you. When I was in Ipswich, it was the Salem News, it was the Daily. They didn't have a weekly, but it wasn't much of a weekly, the real news out of the town was in Salem News. If you have a weekly publication, particularly if they're going to press on Thursday, that's a squeeze.
So, I mean, that's something to kick around too, if we want to kick back to Tuesdays, that opens up a lot of workspace for Bob to get the stuff recapped and an extra day to get the agenda done as well, so to speak.
Well, it just seems to me that you see, you see several agendas, as it, as it, several different iterations of the agenda as the week goes on. And all of that is extra time that we're taking away from something else that could be being done. And I think that a good board has a sixty forty ratio, sixty percent of the time being proactive and forty percent of the time being reactive. And I think if we could get that ratio and then, and then had more time for them to do the other tasks, you know, and not have to spend the whole, it seems to me that it's a pretty big task if we're, if we keep getting different iterations of the, of the agenda and different background materials and not getting the background materials until we come to the meeting through no fault of anybody's, but through the fact that you only have three days or whatever number of days you have, you don't have many days.
I think there's an opportunity there to make better use of the OneDrive or something like that, which is a way to keep the current one up there, any documents up on the OneDrive and we have access to it. Maybe in a remotely format so that we can, we're always seeing it there. Less email going out, which is your concern there, the most current stuff, it's online in the folder called next week's meeting or something like that.
Yeah, I, I use the OneDrive to get the agenda, but it's not the same agenda as when I come here.
No, I know.
When I come here.
So we should use better use of making sure the most current thing is up there.
But, but does that take more time, more time with other things?
No, it's a document.
But everything, I put everything on the, on the OneDrive, but the agenda often just sort of evolves too.
Well, we don't have to beat this to death.
These, these issues can be worked a little better, I guess, but the real challenge is email. Now, maybe twenty percent of the email is from selectmen, there's a blizzard of email every day. And, and keeping up is, is a real challenge. Maybe of the sixty or seventy that I get a day, a third is junk or things that I don't have to address, but then they're not talking about the twenty percent.
That's our twenty percent, yeah.
Nigerian money that.
I already heard that. I understand.
Twenty million dollars.
And sometimes it's time consuming. And that includes email from the staff, from boards and committees that need certain kinds of assistance and so forth. And also, it's email based on the projects that we have going, and as you know, the town has quite a few things going right now, and, and so there's a lot of back and forth required for that. And so, I, there's no solution to this, I'm not sure that there is any solution, and, you know, if I were to be complaining about it to you, I'm in the wrong business. I mean, it's just, that's just a reality that we have to juggle and.
And as this, this is something you've carried from place to place.
It doesn't change, it's a problem, an issue in every community that I know of.
And this is going to be on for next week when we have the discussion of how our meetings can improve, so we don't have to beat this to death right now.
County Hall reopening?
I think it's a question of when do we want to do it, the CDC order that came down today is that two people will have their vaccinations, do not have to wear masks when they're together, so.
I thought it was an effective date, not just getting vaccinated, you had to wait.
Fourteen days after.
So.
They have a ring card, I mean, how do you know?
I'm thinking that, number one, the state is really making progress now after, after some false starts, the state is now making progress with vaccinations. And maybe early April might, might be a time to reopen the building.
The one thing that does speak to the fact that we probably are looking at a much better chance of a live town meeting this year as well. And on time.
And not in the parking lot.
Okay.
A big sale.
Canterbury Hall painting?
I think Bob and I chatted about this, you really need to just go out and get some quotes, I think it's a matter of, right now, people are out there looking for business. Set the spec out there and say, you know, get.
Yeah, if we ask for community preservation money, that's going to trigger the secretary's guidelines and that's going to jack the price probably by two thirds.
So I think, you know, I'll work with the historical society, et cetera, that's one of my people, just come back to the board with some quotes and Bob might have some, Bob might have some contacts as well, college pro or whatever. I see their signs everywhere and just come back, because I have to work with the society member, they volunteered to underwrite some of the costs.
All right, correspondent's streetlight list?
I think we have the list that the police department sent to us, and I think we need to get a firm quote from ever source as to what the cost will be to, you know, if we add fifteen lights, I really would like to make sure it's solidly in the budget, both for the current year and for next year. Okay, and then bring that back to the board.
A B C C notice is just simply the new regulations regarding the opening, that they can open, must be a minimum of ten feet between, they can have entertainment, must be a minimum of ten feet between performers, twenty-five feet between performers and first row of the audience, six foot distancing with people. All right, and the, we have a resignation from Courtney Lusford, from the Western Mass.
It's a Massachusetts Municipal Wholesale Electric, Wholesale Electric Company. So back, and I don't know if Jim's on the call here, but back in the, gosh, Kim, was this before you? Wow. Before you, before, no, no, before you and me, before you and me. So basically, they were talking about putting a gas line through town to service Munglo and to do that in Cutford, Wilbraham, and the only way they could do it was the state said, fine, you have to have a rep from Camden and Wilbraham on your board. The line never went through, the people are still on there with John M. For a while and Neil was appointed to it. So, uh, the meetings are in Westboro, Harborough, something like that. You know, so we can put it out there, but I think we really need to find the role, what it is. They meet a couple of times a year. There's no money involved in it. It's just a community involvement.
Selectmen's reports?
A couple of meetings coming up. We have a planning board meeting this Wednesday and then a following one this week. They will be discussing, uh, the solar landfill, looking for some, moving forward on that. COA board meeting tomorrow as well. All these are on, uh, well, the COA is on Zoom. The planning board is planning to be on Zoom because they have a public hearing at the end of the month and that'll be a Zoom thing.
That's, is it Wednesday?
It's, it'd be Wednesday, the twenty-fourth. I know that Parks, I believe, is pushing to be on Zoom. So we're getting good participation on that.
Yeah.
And the conservation commission had, has done a meeting on Zoom. So I'm setting up the meeting for the planning board on the twenty-fourth, but I think gradually they will take over that.
And the regional schools, we, we had a meeting with them, um, and we attended an advisory hearing, uh, which they participated in sharing their budget and they're going to be sharing their budget again Thursday night. Um, so anybody that wants to zoom it, it's posted, um, under.
Thursday is the roundtable with the centers of state reps.
But they can, it's still all going to be zoomed anyway, I think. And so if you want to hear more about the budget, you, you can hear it then. And, um, other than that, that's it, I think. Oh, but I did want to bring up the, um, the server. Do we have a, a server issue?
Yeah, I sent an email to the board about that. I sent an email to you. We had a quote, basically the, uh, assessors are looking for new servers. There's new versions of the software that has come out and they would like to be on that. Originally it was talked, could this be in next year's budget, but they want to be implemented right away. If you saw the quotes that came out, I think Pam sent them out last week.
I got the quotes.
Okay, both purchase and I remember I asked about a lease last week. Surprisingly, the week lease cost was quite a bit more than just purchasing. One suggestion I would have is just because the cost is actually not that much, we have quite a bit of money left in acquisitions and the technology budget. Since it is a priority, I did talk to Norm Scheress today. It is a priority for them to get this online and get the new software running. I would ask the board to go ahead and just approve the purchase of the server, of the technology, but there's quite a bit left in it. And that is what we've been using for upgrading computers around the town hall. It's quite appropriate.
And we may be able to get CARES Act money for it, so.
It's not raising any red flags.
So, and so we do the, the hardware and the service, right?
Right. Between the two accounts, we have almost twenty-five thousand left. So this is not going to short anybody.
All right.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Town administrators report?
Okay, firefighter Matt Sterling is, uh, leaving the town's employment. Uh, he has requested and we are.
He's actually not employed, right? He's a, he's one of the call department. He's not confused, there's a Sir Sterling that's actually one of the three guys during the day.
Right. He's asked for an exit interview and I think, uh, we're not going to do that on a regular basis with, uh, employees who leave the tenant. Uh, we did do a telephone conference on the Hampton County Regional Retirement Board on March third. Uh, I'm sure you've read about that.
And you've got a lot of press. I tell you, you're like celebrities.
Was that a recent picture?
The questions I'm getting is how can little old Hampton be in this charge? How can little old Hampton believe it leading this charge? That's what I hear. They say, I hear people all the time.
Hampton is, is facing an increase of a hundred and three thousand dollars.
Exactly. That's what I tell them. I say, well, we're, these guys are in.
Those people.
Good for them.
Let's see, I did set up the Zoom system in the auditorium for boards and committees. It's been used by the conservation commission. The next use will be by the planning board on the twenty-fourth. I am underway with, uh, another, uh, submission to the state on CARES Act expenditures and reimbursements. Starting at the end of February, there's a new process. Up until, uh, February, uh, towns would request funds and they would send a check. In, in this case, it was put into a special revenue account by our town accountant. Now, the new game is the old state game. You, uh, make the expenditure and then you have to send in for reimbursement. We can still do that. I don't think it's going to be a major bureaucratic burden. Entrez Computer was asked to prepare a technology budget for fiscal twenty-two. They've done that. I didn't bring it to you tonight because they didn't attach costs. They told us what we need, the hardware that we need, but they didn't give us the.
Don't worry about the price of that car.
Next week we'll have their budget with cost attached. I did order, uh, I mentioned this, I think, last time. I did order the, some of the equipment for the crossing at Summers Road.
And the, um, and the speed thing as well, right?
Yes. Oh, yes. Uh, that's coming from Tennessee. Well, I'm sorry, Kentucky. And, uh, I almost had to have a translator on the telephone because they talk a lot differently than us Yankees.
Bless your heart.
Let's see, Tracy Farnsworth has resigned as a police matron.
Yeah. Any, uh, suggestions for, I mean, there is a need for that type of thing.
Yes.
Do we have a suggestion for somebody to refer to?
I do not have a suggestion at this time, but I'll certainly ask the chief of police to help me with that. We have had a contact from Nancy Connors of the east of the Connecticut River Chamber of Commerce, and they're asking the town of Hampton, Hampton, join. Uh, the cost annually would be three hundred dollars.
We've done that in the past. Typically, we take it out of selectman expenses.
Oh, yes. And a message from the Wilbraham dispatch superintendent, who I think is on this call, uh, this afternoon, uh, informing me that a development grant has been approved. Tony, are you still with us?
He's on the right-hand corner. He's in, uh, Charlie Weaver's, but.
I'm here. Can everybody hear me? You're much older than us. Okay. So I did, um, I did apply for the development grant. Uh, the development grant has not been, uh, approved yet. That will be approved hopefully, uh, June or July of this year. What I did get approved from the state, now they're going to assist in reimbursement, will be the startup costs that we've identified, uh, radio communications and as well as, uh, data between the two buildings before the fiber gets put in. Um, that came to about thirty-six thousand dollars and the state will, will be, uh, funding that. So it will cost either, it won't cost anything for, uh, for either town. So there are, they are backing us for this merger and, uh, we have the full support of the state as well as the state nine-one-one department.
So you've applied for the development grant. I thought you had said today on the phone that, that, uh, I thought you had said in the email, I mean, that, uh, it was received.
Uh, no, the development grant was applied for. They usually don't, uh, get out the letters for the approval until June or so. But the, the, uh, support grant that I requested in addition to for our startup costs has been approved.
That's thirty-six thousand, Tony?
Uh, yeah, thirty-six thousand, six hundred and thirty-five. That entails, uh, communications equipment for us in Wilbraham to be able to talk into the Hampton police and fire system as well as, uh, data connection with, uh, some hardware between both, uh, buildings until the fiber gets put in.
And now what does the development grant consist of?
The development grant will consist of the assessment that Wilbraham assesses Hampton at. Uh, it also consists of, um, the fiber that we are requesting the state to pay for, for us, uh, to be able to talk back and forth, uh, through data. It's also going to include some improvements to the Hampton Police Department, uh, telephone upgrade, uh, upgrades, the security system at the building, cameras, door locks, et cetera. Also an upgrade for the Wilbraham Police Department as well. And I put in for a total, I requested six hundred and ninety-six thousand, three hundred and fifteen dollars and seventy-one cents for the development grant.
Okay.
All right.
All right. All right.
All right.
All right. Thank you.
Had the citizen complaint.
Thank you.
Has been forwarded to action ambulance. I don't have a response. I thought I would by tonight, but I don't. Also, uh, the question of when is the Collins report arriving? You can see the quote there from Mary Arcarty. This week is the answer to that question.
All right, we need to get that because we've got so many salaries and hanging out there.
Now, uh, there's a question that I've been discussing with town council about this police certification process. Apparently the Hampton police want to decertify the existing IBPO union and certify a new police union. Question is, should the town have representation at this hearing and in this process? Town council said, well, maybe you should. And I said, I don't see that the town has any particular interest here. Uh, it's probably going to cost us five hundred dollars to have representation there in Boston. And, uh, I said, I'd bring it before the board, but my sense is that this is a matter for the police. Uh, we will negotiate a contract with whatever union, uh, they send to us. Uh, and I don't know that it matters particularly to the town, which union they certify.
How is this different than, if you recall, the dispatchers changed unions? How is that different? Get in their knickers for that. Why do we really?
Why, and why would we prefer one union over another? I mean, we just negotiate the contract, their choice.
It's just delaying the contract negotiation.
So, no, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you for the invitation, but no, thank you.
And that is the report.
Okay, I have one word then to say. Tower. Where are we?
Tower?
Tower.
Oh, tower.
We were going to be out there.
They were supposed to climb it today and. Because I have no life, I did drive by to see.
The gate was locked. How'd you get up there?
I saw, I went over, looked, I didn't see anybody up there.
Okay.
So.
I mean, it's supposed to be sixties this week. I mean, the weather's supposed to be perfect this week if they don't get them this week.
Yeah, they gotta get it done this week.
We'll wait, we'll wait for that good report next week to picture it.
Anything else? Motion to adjourn? All in favor? Or second, your second? Thank you. Good evening, everyone.